Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's City Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to each of you who are in attendance this evening, and if you are online, please make yourself known if you wish to speak. We have had a bit of technical difficulty, and David will work with you on getting your voice into the recording. I also would like to offer a special welcome to those Leadership Independence class members who are in attendance this evening and who are satisfying one of their class requirements by being here. Welcome. The next item on the agenda is the adoption of this evening's agenda. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to review the agenda? And do I have any amendments or additions to this evening's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do have an amendment. I would like for us to add, under item five, immediately following subsection D, an executive session for the purpose of consulting with our attorney.
Following D?
Following C.
C. Following...C as in cat. Thank you.
C as in cat. And on that, I would move that it be amended, be adopted as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second, I also have an item that I would like, just a little clarification on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please tell me what your amendment or addition is.
D, item D.
Item D from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Would you like that moved to items for commission action?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I've heard a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Mr. David, have you got those amendments recorded?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I have a que...I don't have a D under consent, do I?
The consent agenda, item D, is consider authorizing award of the concrete patching bid.
Oh, okay, fine.
So we're moving that one?
Aye. Aye.
And aye. So the amended agenda has been adopted. Item two, appointments. The Planning Commission has one unexpired term ending January 1st, 2024. Applications are being accepted through February the 4th of 2022. That's this coming week. Please get your application turned in. You can apply, you can find those applications online at the city's website, or you can pick up a copy from City Hall. Also, item B, the land bank has one unexpired term ending June 1st, 2022, and applications are due by noon on February 4th for that as well. Was there something else I needed to say about that?
They both have to reside within the city limits for both of those.
Indeed. Those of you who apply, who wish to be seated must reside within the city limits of Independence, Kansas. Thank you very much. Do I...I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Public hearings.
I'm sorry.
Yes?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This evening, we have a public hearing. The next item is a public hearing to consider condemnation of 2009 and a half North Penn Avenue in Independence, Kansas as being dangerous and unsafe. The public hearing is now open. We will first hear from city staff as to the staff's recommendations, followed by comments from anyone in the public wishing to make a comment. Who is speaking on behalf of the staff this evening?
I am Mayor.
Yes, David.
Mayor, this structure was involved in a fire and has been undergoing rehab, and I'm happy to announce that they have completed the project. However, we just completed the HQS this week, so we're going to ask that you just adjourn this meeting till February 21st, 2022, when we will bring this back, and it looks like we'll be able to ask you to remove it from the condemnation list. We just need to finish up a few things with the inspection and the homeowner, and we'll be able to complete this in February. And it'll be rehabbed and back on in use.
Thank you, David. That's good to hear. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak during the public hearing this evening? In that case, I close the public hearing. I'm now open for a motion regarding this property.
All right. I make a motion that we adjourn. And you wanted to adjourn to what date, David?
February 24th, 2022, at 5:30.
To February 24th at 5:30, February 24th, 2022. And that is the motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Items for commission action. Consider authorizing an award...excuse me. Kelly, what would work best for you to take care of the...
It would work best to do what was pulled off the consent agenda?
Yes.
Because the PowerPoint is in that order?
Yes, let's do that then. Item D from the consent agenda will be next on our, for our conversation this evening. Consider authorizing the award of the concrete patching bid. John, are you speaking to this this evening?
Yes, I am.
Please proceed.
One of the things that we had started last year was to try and do our concrete patching ourselves. We have found that as of right now and for the foreseeable future, I'm not sure that we have the staffing necessary in either the street department or the water and sewer department to do that concrete patching. And that being the case, we would have to also understand, you know, what duties they would best serve for the city. So noting that we had multiple patches that have not been permanently patched, multiple areas have not been permanently patched with concrete, I requested to understand how many patches we had, and as of November, we had, you know, some 285 square yards worth of patching that needed to be done. Yeah. So it's a relatively significant amount of work that needs to be done in order to bring our streets up to what folks would consider a good acceptable smooth street. So looking at what we're trying to do is some of these road cuts and utility patches were put in place in August and September. So now we find ourselves in January after having bid everything, and we're finding that, you know, it's been six months that we've had temporary patches in place, and I don't think that that's good enough. And so one of the things I wanted to do, and this was my intent from the very beginning, was to get a per-square-yard patching price in order to get that fixed. So if we had, you know, if we opened the street to repair the pipe, we can close the street and repair it permanently the first time. That saves us redoing it twice because we have to put something temporary in place regardless before we do, put a permanent patch in place. But so that gets us out of that work. We're repairing it once, and we're repairing it properly using outside forces. Now, one thing I'll note about this, we did send the patch list out with the bids with the idea that here's the scope of work. Again, we received two bids, and quite fortunately, they were within 3% of each other. So they were very, very close. Were they much farther apart, I wouldn't have suggested this, but, you know, since we have a low bidder, it would be suggested that the low bidder be, if they are capable, of doing that entire first set of list that we had. Let them do that work, and then for additional work that comes on after that list, that we choose a contractor that's available. And I requested that, something I've seen done before other places, is both contractors would be awarded the same square yard price. That way, we wouldn't be asking one to do one, the same work for less. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the intent by that, so that we can get our streets repaired rapidly while having, you know, being able to call on a contractor. And if one of the contractors becomes very busy, well, the other contractor would hopefully be available in order to patch up our street once completely and professionally, so.
John, I think I had asked some questions on this.
Yes.
And the main was that I didn't quite understand, and you've already explained it about the number of square yards of patching that is going to be needed. And when I looked at the list, I just saw the 16, and then that made me question as, are we splitting the 16 up between the two bidders, or how is that going to work? But in your, in your email, I understand that the low bidder initially will take those 16 that that person bided on, and then the rest will be divided up as to who's available to do the work?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that was, that was my question. I didn't quite understand that. So that's why I sent it in, because I thought if he's bidding on that 16, I didn't realize that there were more than that. I knew there were, I didn't know what the number was. So you've cleared that up for me, and that's why I pulled this item out, so.
And thank you, because I thought that was an exceptional question. It was very good, because I could have put a few more words in there the first time I put it through. And this is also kind of a theme that I'd like to establish, is to find unit prices for city services that are going, that we're going to use throughout the course of the year. Have those unit prices set and approved by the commission. And that way, when there's an emergency, like when we had the storm sewer blowout in front of G and W, that we can react very quickly and also get a good financial deal for the city.
All right, John, thank you. You've answered my questions. Thank you.
Very good.
Very good indeed. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to authorize award of contracts for concrete patching to Goins Concrete and Construction and Recreat Design Concrete Plus Construction at the unit cost of $143 per square yard.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, John. Items for commission action. The first item is consider authorizing an award for the Enterprise Drive Improvement Project. Who's speaking to the...John, you're back.
I am, I am. As part of the expansion out in the industrial park, one of the components of that was working through improving Enterprise Drive. As such, we've created the plans for that. We have bid them, and we did have a single bidder. The single bidder was J. Graham Construction, and their bid price was $1.490 million. The engineer's estimate was $1.456 million. So the difference was approximately $40,000. Even though we did have a single bidder, they were very close to the engineer's estimate, and the engineer felt that the bid was reasonable and responsive.
Any questions for John on this further gentleman?
No, John, with the cost of everything going up, with just a difference of $40,000, that was not a deal breaker on this. And we have a good relationship with J. Graham, and they do good work. So, yeah, I don't have an issue with this.
I have none.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that...excuse me here. Oh, sorry. I make a motion that we move to authorize award of the unit price contract for the Enterprise Drive Improvements Project to J. Graham Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,490,922.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, John. Item B, consider authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with PEC for Riverside Park and Ralph Mitchell Zoo Electrical Study.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The City of Independence previously put out a request for proposals for stamped electrical plans for Riverside Park and Zoo. After review of the initial RFP, the city updated it and refined the request for an initial study of the electrical service with a complete cost estimate. We received four proposals, the highest being $34,800, the lowest being $9,000. The steering committee has reviewed the proposals and has recommended PEC, whose price was a, was not to exceed $16,000. The low bid did not meet all specifications and a complete cost estimate required or requested for their RFP. The city has previous experience with PEC, and everything has gone well so far.
Questions, gentlemen?
I have no questions, and if this organization has met your standards, I would move that that it be accepted and that the mayor be authorized to execute such documents as are necessary for PEC, with PEC for Riverside Park and Zoo's study at $16,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Consider authorizing an award for preliminary design for the new public works facility.
We requested an RFP from architectural firms to look at the base preliminary cost for the new public works facility. We did have multiple responses. There were two that were tied for low, at the cost of $8,500 for this work, which is absolutely the ballpark that this work should be in. BG Consultants, which they are the architect for the work that's taking place at the zoo and the new restroom, and also HB and K. HB and K, of course, is well-known throughout Independence. Both, those firms are, I believe, equally capable. The bids were both, they were responsive, and I think both firms would do a wonderful job. In this particular case, HB and K would have significantly less time associated with any travel costs. I'm sorry, yes, they would have less time compared to BG just because of location. So two great firms, the exact same price. I would suggest that we go with HB and K.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John?
I have none.
I have none.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we move to authorize award of the preliminary design and budgeting work to HB and K Architecture at a not-to-exceed price of $8,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
We have amended the agenda this evening to include an executive session. How much time do we need for the executive session for...
I think 30 minutes would be adequate. Would you like for me to make the motion?
Yes, please make the motion, and we will reconvene then at 6:21.
I move that we recess for an executive session with consultation, for consultation with our attorney, our city attorney on legal matters pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception found in KSA 75-4319B sub B sub C, and that we reconvene at 6:21, 5:21, 6:21?
6:21.
6:21. And that included in the executive session would be the commissioners, the city manager, and the city attorney.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll be back in 30 minutes. We're back in session. I apologize to those of you who were expecting us back earlier. During the executive session, we had some conversation about a motion to be taken before the commission at this point. Do you have a motion?
I do, I do, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would move that item 5D on the agenda be tabled until our March 10 commission meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Motion, item D is tabled until March 10. Reports. Land Bank 2021 report, please.
With the new development of the establishment of the Independence Land Bank, we are required annually to provide you a report. In your packet was that report. It notes that the funding for the Independence Land Bank, $50,000, came in from the Independence Housing Authority, and additional funds came in from some property that the land bank acquired. And currently, we only have one property that is acquired underneath the land bank, a commercial property. So, very short and sweet annual report with us just getting up and going with the land bank. Hopefully, we'll have some lots and some houses in there by the end of 2022. Does anybody have any questions? I'm more than happy to answer it.
My first question is that you meet regularly as the land bank. How are your meetings being attended, and are you meeting regularly, monthly, or how is that?
We meet monthly if a meeting is needed. We have met in the beginning to establish the policies and procedures. We have met to acquire the property into the land bank. The last couple of months, we have not met because we've not had any action items to take. So we don't meet unless there's some action items to take or there is items for discussion.
I see.
In other words, no reason to have a meeting if we don't need to have a meeting.
I will attest, she's a taskmaster.
Oh.
She gets, she gets stuff done. I, one of my, I'm trying to think, it was a good thing or a bad thing about being elected to the commission is I had to get off the land bank, but it was an enjoyable, educational process.
Even though Tim's time was short and sweet, it was very productive, and he contributed a great deal, so it's appreciated.
Any other questions for April this evening?
I would say for anybody, we meet the first Thursday of the month at noon here at Memorial Hall. So if anybody wants to attend, it is a public meeting, and they're, they're welcome to attend.
If there are no other questions about the land bank report, let's continue with the housing needs analysis.
Okay, I've tried to shorten this for you. I'm here tonight to introduce to you and provide information concerning our housing conditions, our housing concerns, our lack of housing. Part of what I'm doing is housing needs analysis is required for us to establish a real housing incentive districts. I will be coming back at your next meeting with that resolution for you to hopefully vote to establish real housing incentive districts. But this is required for us to complete, for your consideration, for us to submit to the Secretary of Commerce at the state level. So with that, housing is crucial to the quality of life and well-being for a community and its individuals and families, but the availability of adequate or affordable housing also plays a vital role in community economic development. The lack of affordable and adequate housing in a community hinders growth as it becomes difficult to attract new businesses, industry, and residents. Slow-growth or even no-growth communities need new housing to replace units that have been removed or in poor condition. The housing needs analysis has been developed pursuant to the KSA 12-5244A, which is required by the Secretary of State, Commerce. The intent of this analysis is to determine if there exists a shortage of quality housing in Independence, Kansas. In addition, this analysis is needed to submit to the Secretary of Commerce for approval in order to establish the real housing incentive district. The Secretary of Commerce has established four findings that must be made when conducting a housing needs analysis for the RHID, and they are as follows. There is a shortage of quality housing in various price ranges in the city or county despite the best efforts of both public and private developers. The shortage of quality housing can be expected to persist, and that additional financial incentives are necessary in order to encourage the private sector to conduct or renovate housing in such city or county. The shortage, finding number three, the shortage of quality housing is a substantial deterrent to the future economic growth and development of such city or county. And then the fourth, the future economic well-being of the city or county depends on the governing body providing additional incentives for the construction or renovation of quality housing in such city or county. So, finding one, there is a shortage of quality housing of various price ranges in Independence, Kansas despite the best efforts of public and private housing developers. The Secretary of Commerce uses, if every one of our homes here in town were, had a HQS housing quality standards conducted on them, we could use that. Since there are not, we are using, the measure we've used in this report is the housing problems criteria. And there are three housing problems criteria in this section. Units with physical defects, which means they are lacking a complete kitchen or bathroom. Two, units with overcrowding, more than one person per room. Or three, units carrying a cost burden of greater than 30%, which are housing costs, including utilities, exceed 30% of gross income. And I have evaluated each of those. The secretary's housing shortage indicator for physical defects is a minimum of 96% of the units are without defects. Defects are measured using lack of complete plumbing and kitchen facilities. Communities with more than 4% owner occupied and 5% rental of the units having defects are considered housing shortages. While data is not available with renter and owner occupied units separated by the U.S. Census, this is where the data was gathered, there are a total of 382 units, or 8.1%, that lack complete kitchens, or there are 333 units, 7.1%, that lack complete plumbing. Independence, therefore, is, our determination has a shortage, there exists a shortage with units, complete kitchen and complete plumbing with 8.1, 7.1 prospectively, that have incomplete facilities. This far exceeds the secretary's threshold. Units with overcrowding. I won't read this. We do not meet this threshold. We have more houses available with the number of four bedrooms or more versus the number that the U.S. Census says that we have families of six or more. So this is a threshold that we do not meet. We don't have to meet all thresholds to be considered a housing shortage. Then moving on to the third, owner-occupied housing units gross mortgage as a percentage of household income. Then moving on to the third, owner occupied housing units, gross mortgage as a percentage of household income. According to HUD, paying more than thirty percent of one's income for housing is considered cost burden, making it difficult to afford other necessities such as food, transportation, or medical needs. As noted, ten point four percent of the owner occupied units in Independence are paying more than thirty percent of their income for their mortgage. Of major concern, five point two percent of owner occupied units are paying more than fifty percent of their household. Concerning owner occupied housing units without a mortgage as a percentage of household income, eight percent of the owner occupied units without a mortgage are paying more than thirty percent of their income for housing. Eighty-one households, or three point four percent, are paying more than fifty percent. These are houses, families, homeowners that have no mortgage. This may demonstrate a concern with the age of the homes within Independence. Older homes have added costs for repairs, well as increased utility expenses, as they are normally not energy efficient. Then we move on to gross rents as a percentage of household income. And these numbers are large. Forty point five percent of occupied rental units are paying more than thirty percent of their income for rent. According to HUD, once again, thirty percent of one's income for housing is considered a cost burden, making it difficult to afford other necessities. We most assuredly meet the Secretary of Commerce's threshold on cost burden. Now, as for data concerning price range data, what we have available in various units, price range data can be collected using U.S. Census Bureau data or local data based on current selling prices of owner occupied units and the categories of current contract rents for rental units. This analysis that I used uses local data. The data that we used for the sale in the Independence area, the data that we gathered was from Wichita State University's associative Realtors. They work with the Southeast Kansas associative Realtors. And in their data, it does not extrapolate out just Independence. So the data I'm going to share with you is the north part of Montgomery County and Wilson County. Independence area housing market, a three-year historical comparison. In comparing the last three years of homeless listing and sales, the Independence area is trending as a seller's market, where demand exceeds supply, demonstrated in the next slides that I'm not going to share with you. I've highlighted them, condensed it. Home sales for twenty twenty-one were up fourteen percent over twenty twenty, and they were up sixteen point eight seven percent over twenty nineteen. Contracts written for twenty twenty-one were up fifty-six percent over twenty twenty, and eleven point eight percent over twenty nineteen. Sales volumes per one thousand were up twenty-six point six percent over twenty twenty, and forty-six point six percent over twenty nineteen. The average sale price for twenty twenty-one was up eleven percent over twenty twenty, and up twenty-five point four percent over twenty nineteen. The median sale price for twenty twenty was up seven point five percent over twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one over twenty twenty, and up twenty-five point six percent over twenty nineteen. Average days on the market for twenty twenty-one was ninety-one days. Twenty twenty, a hundred and forty days, and twenty nineteen, a hundred and thirty-nine days. Median days on the market for twenty twenty-one were fifty-five days, twenty twenty, eighty-eight days, and twenty nineteen, a hundred and ten days. In the next slide, it may be hard to see, but this is average price compared to closing. Independence area home sales historic comparison, closed listings. You will see both the average price and the median price of the closed listings from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one are all trending upwards significantly. On the next slide, Independence area home sales historic comparison, closed versus active listings. If you can see on that slide to the right, history of active listings, it's drastically going down. We have no housing available to list for sale. And that, if you look, that's from twenty fifteen starting to twenty twenty-one. You can see, starting in the period of twenty twenty down to twenty twenty-one, it's starting to take that big dip. The next slide, Independence area month supply. As I've stated, seller's market occurs when there is a four-month or less housing supply. That's an industry standard. If you look at that graph right top, once again, you will see a sharp decline. That, again, is from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one. If you look at the end of October is when the data had, for twenty twenty-one, they were at a two point six month availability. Okay. Moving on, another threshold that they look at is your availability of rental. Rental was difficult for us to obtain. So what we did is, we took the city's landlord license list, which there was a hundred and sixty-two. We attempted to make contact with each one of them. We were able to contact a hundred and two to participate in our survey. We had three that refused to participate, and we were unable to contact fifty-seven of them. Either we had a bad number, or they did not return our phone call. We identified seven hundred and eighty-seven units were represented by those a hundred and two participating landlords. Of those seven hundred and eighty-seven units, only forty-three were vacant, or five percent of the rental units. Of those forty-three available units, twenty-seven, or sixty-three percent, are in a low-income, age-restricted housing program, which restricts those that would be eligible to rent those units. Of the sixteen market rate units available, there was only one single family, and the rest were apartment complex. Of note, according to the U.S. Census, we in Independence should have one thousand four hundred and sixty-two rental units. So if you, you take that number, we were only able to contact fifty-three percent of those. So that was, the numbers may be off because that was just who we were able to, to contact. But according to the propertymanagement.com, Kansas for twenty twenty-one, average vacancy rate was at eight point three, with a national vacancy rate at six point two. Of those landlords that we were able to contact, we were well below both of those at a five percent vacancy rate. Another threshold that the Secretary of Commerce uses in determining whether you have a housing shortage is when you have forty percent or more of your housing stock is older than fifty years. Well, we far exceed that threshold. Sixty-one point six percent of the occupied housing stock is older than fifty years, constructed prior to nineteen seventy. Sixty-two percent of the occupied housing stock is owner occupied, with thirty-eight percent renter occupied. Only four point seven percent of the occupied housing stock has been constructed since two thousand. Another threshold that the Secretary of Commerce uses is the condition of Independence housing stock according to, well, what I've used is, according to Montgomery County, here is the condition of the Independence housing stock. Forty percent of the Independence' housing stock is rated as fair or below, meaning that forty percent of the housing stock is characterized as having a significant degree of deferred maintenance, or greater than normal wear and tear present to the, its age. And only four percent of the Independence housing stock is rated as good, meaning only four percent is above average of ordinary standard of maintenance and upkeep in relationship to its age. Another threshold that the Secretary of Commerce wants to see, he uses when assessing a housing shortage, is when there is a number of new units. If the number of new units is less than one year old, if the number of the new units, less than one year old, is less than one point five percent of the total housing stock, then a shortage exists. They were asking for information for the last five years. Well, the last five years, we've built three single-family homes. So I extrapolated and went from two thousand to two thousand and twenty-one. Of the homes that were constructed during that time, forty-one percent of single-family home construction has been constructed by private individuals, with only three of those being constructed since twenty fifteen. Fifty-nine percent of the single-family homes have been constructed with either federal, state, or local subsidies, with only seven or eight percent being constructed since twenty fifteen. New construction for multifamily from twenty two thousand to twenty twenty-one, only ten percent of the multifamily units have been constructed by private individuals, with zero being constructed since twenty fifteen. Ninety percent of the multifamily units being constructed have been constructed with other federal, state, or local subsidies. In using the U.S. Census's data, Independence has three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven units, with only one single family and zero multifamily units having been constructed in twenty twenty-one. This is only point zero two percent, well below the one point five percent threshold. Let's skip the next slide. Public and private development efforts, they're wanting to see that we are publicly trying to develop housing as well as working with private developers. As illustrated by the median age of the city's units, housing starts in Independence have been almost non-existent for a number of years. For the past twenty-one years, there have been only ninety-one single-family homes constructed, and only seventy-one new multifamily units constructed, with a total overall units constructed of a hundred and sixty-two, which forty-four, or twenty percent of these units have been constructed privately, with a hundred and eighteen, or seventy-three, being constructed with either, either federal, state, or local funding assisting, assistance. Since twenty fifteen, there have been only three single-family and zero multifamily. The divide between what it costs to construct versus what the house will appraise for and what a family can afford continues to widen greater with each year. Rural communities will not grow without housing development assistance from the federal, state, and local governments. Next slide, they're wanting to see what efforts we have taken. The city has taken, by establishing, putting into their tool belt several new items. They've established the Independence Land Bank. They established the Neighborhood Exterior Grant. We're under, soon to develop a twenty single-family unit new subdivision. You have the Central Business District Upper Story Grant Program. We've established minimal standards for rental property. We've been aggressive in doing demolitions. And we have participated with Community Mission for Improved Housing and Love Independence Day. Therefore, finding summary one, and I promise two, three, and four go quick. But, summary one, the City of Independence has a housing shortage when measured against a variety of indicators used by the Department of Commerce. Because of lack of move-up and professional entry-level housing, home buyers and renters in these groups have influenced the market and lower price ranges, therefore effectively squeezing lower-income households into cost-burden situations. The city and the Independence Housing Authority have developed several programs and incentives to encourage new development and rehabilitation. Private organizations and developers have also participated in rehabilitations and development efforts, both with and without incentives. Despite the best efforts of the city, IHA, private organizations, and developers, a shortage of quality housing exists. The establishment of rural housing incentive districts could be used to positively impact the market, offering new homes in a variety of price ranges. According to the Secretary of Commerce's standard, we should be building fifty-seven new housing units annually. That means five hundred and seventy over the next decade. In twenty twenty-one, we built one. A housing shortage exists. Second finding, the shortage of quality housing can be expected to persist, and the additional financial incentives are necessary in order to encourage the private sector to construct or renovate housing in such city or county. The second finding required by the secretary is that there is a shortage. This can be demonstrated by examining housing development activities, rehabilitation efforts, and available land. A housing shortage exists if demolitions outpace new construction. Between twenty fifteen and twenty twenty-one, we constructed three new homes, and the city removed seventy-two. This does not include those homes that were removed by individuals. Rehabilitation efforts. As stated previously, Montgomery County Appraisers assigned a rating to residential units with the following designations. As you can see, most units in a community would be rated, most ideally, would be rated average range, with somewhat even distribution of units above and below. The CDU code data provided demonstrates the housing conditions distribution for Independence. While the majority, sixty percent of housing, is rated as average, only a hundred and forty-seven or four percent rate above. Another forty percent of housing units rate below average. Despite considerable efforts to encourage rehabilitation, efforts have not been kept up ahead of the maintenance needs of the housing stock, and thus a housing shortage exists. On the next slide, it's hard to see, but we also have very limited land available for development. What you see here is land that's available for development that is platted, and there's only a hundred and thirty-three lots in those plats. The next slide shows available land for development that is unplatted. So summary, finding number two, based upon the number of demolitions, number vacant lots, and the current construction rates, and the disconnect of what it costs to construct versus the new, what new construction will appraise for in Independence, the shortage of quality housing can be expected to persist. Adding special assessments to existing taxes as a means to fund infrastructure will only deter new construction of single-family or multifamily units, as buyers will not be able to afford the units. The rural housing incentive district would expand the lower limit of qualifying buyers. It would also increase the pool of rental units available. Finding number three, the shortage of quality housing is a substantial deterrent to the future economic growth and development of such city or county. Economic development has always been a focus of any community, but in twenty, in September twenty eighteen, the City of Independence conducted and adopted a community-based strategic plan. The central purpose of this plan was to provide Independence with a tool that could be used by elected officials and city staff to guide goal-setting and focus efforts on those things that residents identified as highest priority. Out of that outcome of the community's involvement, primary directive number one was economic development. The City of Independence listened to the citizens and took action. The city established the Economic Development Advisory Board. They revamped the building permitting process and the building department, making it business-friendly. They established the Blight and Beautification Committee, Community Advisory Committee, and they participate in the chamber's best program. While the City of Independence has had limited economic growth and development over the course of the past decade, the pace of new commercial construction, commercial renovations, and new businesses going to, into existing structures has seen an uptick over the last twenty-four months. Many new entrepreneur retailers and restaurateurs have opened for business in Independence, historical downtown business district, such as Bow's and Britches Children's Boutique, Sunflower Nutrition, Apricot Lane, which is a franchise, Prairie Fox, The Pink Kitty, Dicky's Barbecue, which is a franchise, Cask and Grove, Premium Oils and Vinegars. In addition, there are others like Holrood Coffee, the soon-to-come-in Domino's Pizza, which is a franchise, and Scooter's franchise. Summary finding number three. The Independence economy is growing, as twenty twenty-one has several economic indicators demonstrating positive growth. indicators demonstrating positive growth. The 2022 forecast indicates continued positive economic growth opportunities. With the current list of projects and the potential of existing industry expansions, the challenge facing Independence is the lack of housing. Independence currently has an outmigration of employees working in Independence and living elsewhere. According to the Montgomery County Action Council's website, Independence has four hundred and sixteen non-resident commuters, commuterers. Three hundred and sixty of those commuters have more than a forty-minute commute time. If the lack of available housing in Independence is not addressed, all of these positive economic growth indicators will reverse. It would be unfortunate not to aggressively pursue housing solutions. The following is a summary of the 2021-2022 positive growth indicators. As you can see, commercial building permits values were significantly up in 2021, almost twenty-five million compared to, well, and that information is not correct. Were significantly up over 2021 versus 2020. Going into the City of Independence' valuation for 2022 over 2021 has increased by one percent. In comparing Montgomery County with the other three largest counties in Southeast Region, wages have increased in 2021 over 2020. The mean-average wage for all occupations in Montgomery County has increased from seventeen point seven-two, to seventeen point seven-two for 2020, from nineteen dollars, or to nineteen dollars in 2021. So there has been a dollar and twenty-eight cent increase in wages. Independent sales tax has seen a year-over-year increase since 2018. For 2021 versus 2020, sales tax is up five point five percent. And in 2021, Montgomery County has announced almost a half a billion dollars in commercial and governmental building permits. Finding number four, this is the last one, and it will go quick. The future economic well-being of the city or county depends on the governing body providing additional incentives for the construction or renovation of quality housing in such city or county. So we must demonstrate the economic development housing link. Access to affordable and stable housing in good neighborhoods is associated with positive health, education, and economic outcomes for individuals and families. In addition, having a sufficient supply of housing affordable to households all along the income spectrum is also critical to supporting vibrant and substantial local economies. There are many federal programs that will assist with low income. We have participated in many of those. Because of those, we have constructed more than four hundred low-income units within the city. What we haven't had any programs are for moderate, building for our workforce. Kansas Housing Resources Corporation identified this as a mitigating challenge several years ago to economic growth and established the Moderate Income Housing Grant. Independence has participated two previous times, and we have a third grant of two hundred thousand dollars to assist us with a new subdivision. Even though we're ever so grateful for the two hundred thousand dollar Moderate Income Housing Grant, the Independence Housing Authority is still in need of assistance in additional funding to develop this Jefferson subdivision. Including the land cost and estimated infrastructure cost, IHA anticipates each lot cost will be approximately fifty thousand dollars. And according to Woods Lumber last week, the current square footage per house cost for a spec home is a hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot. Therefore, if we want to construct what the community has told us they most need, three-to-four-bedroom, two-bath, sixteen-hundred-square-foot to eighteen-hundred-square-foot ranch-style slab-on-grade home, we are looking at, for sixteen-hundred-square-foot, we are looking at a projected cost of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars, and for an eighteen-hundred-square-foot, three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars. Those homes will not appraise out for that, therefore there's a disconnect, therefore we need to figure out a way to meet that hole. It is vital for local, state, and federal governmental entities to focus on establishing programs that will assist in the construction of workforce moderate-income housing units, as they have historically assisted low-income housing programs. A community's overall health, economic health and viability is dependent on all housing types being available. For years, various stakeholders in Independence' community have discussed the lack of housing as a hindrance to community growth, advancement of economic development, bringing new jobs in businesses, and the need to expand the tax base. It is vital for local, state, and federal government entities to focus on establishing programs that will assist in the construction of workforce moderate-income housing units, as they have historically low-income housing programs. A community overall health and viability is dependent on all housing types being available. The loss of people living in a community has a trickle-down effect in the community. When people don't live in the community they work, they don't pay taxes, their children don't attend the local schools, they don't shop locally, and they don't spend their leisure time attending community events and festivals. Conversely, employers need employees to live close to where they work. Studies have shown employees who live in the communities where they work are better employees. As employers see lower absentee rates, less employment turnover, thus reducing training costs, and when an employee stays with the company more than twenty-four months, there are fewer worker compensation claims. Economic development is tied to a quality housing stock for new employees. Without the latter, it is hard to attract the former. The City of Independence' aging, housing stock is declining. The future economic well-being of Independence depends on developing new housing to meet the needs of a variety of consumers. Additional incentives are needed to spur development of this housing. Hope everybody's still awake. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Well, there's certainly a lot to think about there, April. What is the next step?
The next step, I'm working with Jep to write, develop the resolution. We will come back at the next meeting. You will approve the resolution along with his housing needs analysis, and it will go, once it's approved by the City Commission, then it will go to the Secretary of Commerce for their review, and if he approves and determines that there is a housing shortage in Independence, then the RHID will be established. It will come back to the city. And the intent is, all of the shaded areas in those platted and unplatted locations that I shared with you, those are all the areas that include, plus including the downtown historical district, commercial district, is to be included in an RHID. Each time that you, we would have to go through this process each time to set up an RHID. The goal is to set up all of these at once, so that if we have any prospects, they're not waiting ninety days, or a hundred and twenty days, or whatever the process may be. We are in a proactive position for any opportunities of development. And in setting up the downtown RHID, this will allow anybody who has an interest in buying a building, and they want to develop some apartments upstairs, that if there's an RHID set up for the downtown district, then any part of the building costs and any construction that's tied to that housing, they will be entitled to that rebate back. The RHID pays for infrastructure, as well as new home construction for the downtown, or revitalization of the upper stories.
Thank you. Any other questions for April this evening?
I have none.
Thank you, April. Appreciate the presentation. City Board Minutes, any questions about the Electrical Board Minutes that was presented this evening?
I have none.
No.
City Manager Comments.
Did you have the Public Works Report?
Public Works Report, Dave. For John.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at a, we've talked about a lot of public works tonight, so my notes are actually very, very few unless there are any questions. The Maple Street Cost Share Project is getting ready to kick off, and that'll be kicking off in February, so construction of that will start very shortly. KDOT, Tenth and Main, that construction is scheduled to start March first. I did send out a communication about the replacement water line.
John, hold on just a second. As you speak to each of those, would you tell me?
I'm sorry, yes. Number fourteen.
Yes.
KDOT, Maple Street Cost Share. I even had the fourteen highlighted, so that's entirely my fault. That project is getting ready to kick off, and that'll kick off the very first week of February, so we'll be starting work on that project. And then on Project Sixteen, KDOT, Tenth and Main, we did finally get a firm price on the water line replacement. We looked at three different options, and given the very likely that we expect the water line to maintain integrity for the next twenty-five years, we do recommend that we do not replace the water line at this point. Beyond that, Item Twenty, Bridge Inspections, that work has been awarded, and we anticipate it being complete in February. So we've talked about so many of these items already tonight, unless there are additional questions, those are all the highlights from the report.
I have no questions.
I'm good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Now we're ready for City Manager Comments.
I don't have any comments this evening, there.
Thank you, Kelly. Commissioner Comments.
Nope.
Nope. I'm good here.
Public Concerns, David.
Yep.
No public concerns. We will now move into an executive session. We have the following motion. I move that we recess for an executive session concerning confidential data relating to financial affairs and our trade secrets of a company pursuant to the exception found at KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B four. How many minutes do we need for this?
Fifteen. Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, so we will reconvene at seven twenty-three P.M. in the Civic Center in Memorial Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll be back at seven twenty-three.
Please state who's.
Oh, Commission, the City Attorney, the City Manager, the Assistant City Manager, the Finance Director, and Mr. Sean Turner.
And can we also add John Garrus to that?
And John, will you be able to attend our executive session? Thank you, David. We're back in session now. No action was taken in the executive session. Item nine, or item eleven, excuse me, adjournment, motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone, for being here this evening. Have a good evening.